Good evening, Mayor of the Motion, please come out and executive. Scott Shields and Mrs. Charico, please rise for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every truth and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending our board meeting this evening. We have quite a full agenda, we had two wonderful presentations. And so without hesitation, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Victor Mattman.
Thank you very much. We'd like to begin this evening by inviting Principal Gennella to come on up. And we're going to start with the Copeland Middle School presentation, which is first on the agenda here. So Principal Gennella, I'm going to hand it over to you. We can reverse that if it's easier. Change of plans, thank you for being flexible, no problem at all.
It's okay.
Catch your breath, catch your breath.
I came after school today to have it all set and ready to go. And when I came, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, I couldn't get it back up. I had a FaceTime Vanessa. And she walked me through.
We would want to do this for that.
Thank you both for being here, and we'll turn it over to you all.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we're very excited to be able to present this evening. I have some of my corner students from Ranshia as well here in New York. I'm sure you can hear me, yes? So we're going to present our adventure to Africa. I'd like to first begin by thanking Vanessa Waxman, who was there every step of the way in helping me get this video together. I would also like to thank our administration, because all of the schools participated in the fundraiser, in the fundraising efforts for this trip. And we were able to do a lot of projects when we were there. And we were able to buy books for the library. And they were just so grateful, just so grateful. So with that being said, I guess, what would you like to say? I guess, explain, this came about, this is through Mission Madara. This was a mission started a few years ago by a Morris Hatland student. He was a senior in high school there. He is now nineteen years old. And it just, really, it just blew us away at what he has accomplished in three years there. So that's very inspiring in itself, that somebody here, a local person, nineteen years old, has started this mission. So keep that in mind, all of you children out there, that you could do good things when you put it in mind too.
So backtrack, last winter Gina said to me, can I ask you something? And I thought she was going to say, will you run off the test? She said, do you want to go to Uganda with me? And I said, yeah. Why go to Uganda with you?
I knew I only had to guess one person. I knew.
We're still different.
Still.
I said, I would love to go to Uganda with you, I'm all about an adventure. So that meant getting shots and not telling our parents. So I would just like, just one second before we begin, to tell you just a few facts about Uganda. We did travel eight hours from the capital, Kampala, in a van, nine other people, through very, very poor villages and, really words tend to be described what we saw, to a school of eleven hundred little girls that stayed there. Seventy-seven percent of the population of Uganda is under sixteen years old. So it's a very, very, very young country, about thirty-five, forty million people. The literacy rate is not great, the infant mortality rate is not great. And they really looked forward to us coming. And we were welcome to do whatever we could do, whether it was painting, fixing screens on windows, helping out at the blind school. And we left everything there. When we got there, we had two suitcases, when we left, we had the clothes on our back. And we left everything there. I think I speak for Gina when I say what we gave pales compared to what we received. The love, the joy. The gratefulness, the pure respect and joy of these children. We're going to show you, we're really speechless. So let us show you our July eleventh to July twenty-third. We flew to Dubai, we flew from Dubai to Kampala. And from Kampala, we took an eight-hour van to Suroti. And here's our adventure.
So we visited four schools, just so you know, you'll see it on there. And the music in the background were videos that we took of the children playing the instrument and the singing that we hear of all the children's songs. Eight hours of this.
Has Margaret Bodie from our school said it in her poem entitled, "The People of the Vampire?" Death in America is higher than power. Her sting is stronger than power. Like lightning, she runs faster. Carrying the mission of the tiny vampire. The host of spreading malaria. All the host of death, she beckons glory. My classroom is now a disaster area.
Preschoolers cleaning up after snack. They pick the petals of the flowers and then trust you flowers, because that's what they can give you. Thank you.
If you want to hand out.
So, yes, 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 thank you for inviting me. So I have some of my students here. And they, last year's class, my fifth grade class, was a tremendous help in the fundraising. They helped rolled coins during our penny war. They helped get things together for us, collect the school supplies. So those who are here, I'd like to call them up and acknowledge them, okay? So with that being said, right, Zoe Mittelman, come on up, thank you. Chloe, come on up, Chloe Cogallin. Okay, Julian, Julian Wasowski, come on up. Jackson Magliela. Jacob Myers. Mia Heidler, come on up. And Carter Seifert. Thank you to the board for having us come. We were very excited to present this evening.
Take care of a good fall.
On behalf of the Board of Education, Gina. I'm right here. We thank you for all of your efforts, and we're so proud of you. And what you said about getting as much back from them as you gave to them, you can sense in the room. I think everybody's eyes are just glued to what you saw. And I was getting chills when I was seeing.
There was amazing.
Thank you for everything you've done and helped the board.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Alfonso Gennella, the Principal of Copeland. Tonight, I have a brief presentation on the CMS Annual Health and Wellness Fair. But before we begin, I'd like to do a couple of brain teasers that we did with the students on the first day of school at our grade level meetings. So a couple of brain teasers. You can only have it once you have given it. Any guesses? Gaetano. Very good, respect. So one of the key pieces that we keep drawing back to with our students is the awe in our heart, which is respect. And something that we discussed is having respect for your peers, having respect for your parents, having respect for your teachers. We talked about the actual physicalness of the school, having respect for the building and the people that work in it. But the most important thing is having respect for yourself. And that's something that we keep drawing back to with our students in every conversation. This one's a little more difficult. A prison you feel safe in, yet never quite happy. Whenever you try to leave it, it only grows bigger. Anyone brave enough to get it without moving it? Fear, that's a great, great guess. Whoa, Miss Solazo. Your comfort zone. And the reason we drew on this with the students is leaving your comfort zone. As you know, we come from five different elementary schools. Sometimes we establish social circles, and we travel those circles all the way throughout middle school and high school. So we encourage our students to leave their comfort zone. When we talk about the cafeteria and free seating in the cafeteria, no one sits alone, meet new friends. Talk about the classroom, you know, the old term was, students taking educational risks, being an active participant in your education. That's leaving your comfort zone. We recently had a cellphone committee, Student Cellphone Committee, launched last Wednesday. We encourage students, come down, voice your opinion, be an agent of change within the building. So those were two key pieces, respect and leaving your comfort zone. How do those pertain to our presentation tonight? What we've been trying to do at Copeland is really separate the stigma that comes with mental illness and mental health and wellness. Not make it this, you know, this scarlet letter, so to speak, to carry with you, but to feel comfortable speaking about it, to feel comfortable seeking out resources, bringing those conversations to the forefront. We know they're difficult conversations to have. But, you know, as happens today, you know, support your fellow classmates, support your teachers, support each other. And that's what our Mental Health and Wellness Fair is all about. So without further delay, I'd like to introduce two people who are at the forefront of this initiative. Michelle Dickinson, who's going to give you a brief bio for our credentials, and our Vice Principal Stacy Wazneski. So Michelle, do you have?
Hi everyone, thank you so much for having me here tonight with you. My name is Michelle, and I'm a TED speaker and a published author and just a really passionate mental health advocate. And I've been in the pharmaceutical industry about nineteen years. I live in Westfield with my dog Chloe. And I'm a member of the Westfield Coalition for Mental Health, where we're striving to create a stigma-free community. My story is this, I grew up in a home where mental illness lived and lurked in my mother's brain. We didn't talk about it though. Her bipolar disorder was something that we were ashamed of, and because of it, I spent a lot of time and energy concealing that secret. By no choice of my own, I played the role of a child caregiver to her, and that experience shaped my entire life. Through my own healing journey and self-discovery, I've emerged a passionate mental health change agent who's out to do my part to remove the stigma, preventing so many of us from getting the care that we deserve. My memoir, Breaking Into My Life, humanizes mental illness so that others can understand it more and fear it less. I'm a lifelong volunteer of children's programs. I was a court-appointed special advocate, a CASA, a big sister with the Big Brothers and Big Sister Program, and a Miko Wish grantor. Making a difference for children is just something that I love to do. Now, as I said before, I'm a very passionate mental health advocate, especially when it comes to our youth. And I believe that we have a profound opportunity to positively and proactively shape our youth's relationship to brain health, especially at this middle school level. The statistics are sobering. Suicide is the third leading cause of death for fifteen to twenty-four-year-olds, according to the CDC. After accidents and homicide, it's also thought that at least, there's at least twenty-five attempts made for every one completed suicide. And according to the World Economic Forum, half of all mental illnesses begin by the age of fourteen, yet most cases go undetected and untreated. And this is where early intervention is key, and why Copeland Middle School is doing such an amazing job at really setting these kids up for success. The WHO says that there's a growing recognition of the importance of helping young people build mental resilience at an early age. And we can and we should help our young people to build the skills and help them cope with everyday challenges at home and at school. Our middle school population is vulnerable. And CMS is changing the conversation about mental health through the actions they're taking. They're setting the stage so students don't struggle alone and are empowered to speak openly about brain health, and encourage their friends to raise their hands and seek help, ultimately preventing suicide. They're making brain health cool and easy to talk about. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about the story of Project Perfect, which is why I'm here today. In 2013, as a vehicle for myself to heal and to have every single child realize their own greatness, something that I missed out on caring for my mother, I created Project Perfect Just the Way You Are. This program was initially designed to teach children how to nourish their bodies and nourish their minds. My goal was to make a difference around childhood obesity epidemic and bullying. Since its inception, Perfect has reached over two thousand children and their families in New Jersey, New York, and Pennsylvania. And this is where Copeland comes in. In early 2018, I was so grateful to have been introduced to Alfonso and Stacy, where we collaboratively organized our first Perfect program here at Copeland Middle School. And during that one-day health fair, we focused on nourishing the body, nourishing the mind, and leadership skills. This particular health fair was led by adult volunteers. We had several stations. One of the stations was Making a Difference in the World, having children realize that they can make a contribution and make a difference in the world. We had a collage for My Wish for the World, where kids got to figure out what it was they would want to do to change the world. The next station was Bucket Filling. It taught understanding empathy and compassion for ourselves and treating others with love and respect. Meditation for the Imagination. And having kids experience a calming of the mind and creating a happy place through meditation. Station four was Understanding Our Emotions, Feelings in Our Fingers. Really understanding when you're feeling anxious or upset, what that feeling is, ultimately helping them to manage those emotions just by squeezing their finger, thinking about that, taking in deep breaths. The I Am Self-Esteemed Photo Station really gets kids connected to their unique qualities that make them wonderful. And then there was the Gratitude Station. There are some stones on the table over there. The one thing that we wanted the children to get is how rich their lives are already. And I think from the presentation that we just saw, we can recognize that. And that actually came from an audiobook that I once had by Dr. Wayne Dyer, where he shared the story of a man picking up a pebble in a riverbed, and he slipped it in his pocket. And he thought to himself, every time I put my hand on that stone, I'm going to reflect on something that I'm grateful for. And truly live in abundance when your presence all the way. the blessings that you have. And then we had the Leadership and Teamwork Station, which was the Connections Web, that really got the kids connected to the power of leadership and the power of a team coming together. So those were the booths for 2018, and now we're going to turn it over to Stacy to tell you what magic we created in 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening. So as Michelle stated, adults were the primary facilitators when we presented the 2018 Wellness Fair. In the months leading up to the 2019 Wellness Fair, our team devoted our time and energy to making the Wellness Fair more meaningful to our students, how to put students at the forefront, and how to involve our school community. The National Junior Honor Society students quickly evolved into our student leaders. With the help from their advisors, we organized meetings and additional time for students to create their booths. Watching the students create, present, critique, revise, and work as successful teams was a true privilege. Students' leading allowed for the lens to shift from what adults thought were creative, meaningful, and beneficial stations to students guiding the content and the delivery to their peers, truly examining what would be most effective. This year, students not only created the stations, organized the materials, were responsible for setup and cleanup, but presented at three different venues. So just to highlight the bullets above, students were presented with the ideas and were given the opportunity to shape the delivery of the message as a peer group. Students modified the stations to shift the focus towards nourishing the mind. Students collaboratively created the lessons and the activities. They presented their stations to the entire CMS population, and they presented at a parent information night as well. They also went down to Stony Brook Elementary School to present to their students. This year, we also included a guest speaker, Sammy Soren, who was a college student successfully living with mental illness. So I just want to highlight, a lot of the booths do look similar, but I do want to highlight the differences in the 2019 booths. So Station Two is Connecting Our Breath. So we had mindfulness for the, or meditation for the imagination. Now it was connecting our breath to it and teaching students to navigate those waters. Station Six, Delivery Diversity in Action. Students celebrated their individuality in this station. They created a safe place for everyone to be uniquely themselves. Also this year, we had Rutgers to a self-soothing station, where they had a five senses kit to experience the different senses as a tool. Our additional stations also included Elite Martial Arts this year. Their booth was entitled Working Through Challenges and Changing Your Mindset. So they shifted simple vocabulary, thinking of, instead of the word "problem," shifting that to "challenge." Students had the opportunity to write a challenge on a wooden board and break through that challenge. So it symbolized their ability to overcome their challenges. Our guidance department had yoga, mindfulness, and self-awareness. Some of the paperwork is on the table over there. Our team's plan for the 2020 CMS Wellness Fair is to first assess the needs of our students to create a truly meaningful experience, as well as expand our community outreach, positioning our students to not only make an impact on their school community, but to all members of the community. We want to continue to provide the students of CMS with a rich experience, a day in which students have the opportunity to shift their intentions, focus and mindset, and promote respect, a positive self-image, reduce stigma, and equip our students with tools to navigate academic, social, and emotional situations. Here's a glimpse into the experience and student feedback from the 2019 CMS Health and Wellness Fair.
The Wellness Fair at Copeland Middle School definitely helped the students to do a lot of wellness here. I definitely liked the activities because I connected to them very much. The Wellness Fair was basically to get kids to experience the healthy side of life, whether connecting with your emotions, meditation, or being kind to someone else.
Coming straight out of there, I like realized like the positive energy, especially now that I'm going into high school, I need like things to cope with stress, with all the assignments that's going on. And it taught me a lot of things I didn't know before.
The meditation was really soothing, I guess, because I like how they put like the lavender scent around. This school has a lot of stress, and like that activity helps, because like there's a lot of people here that are like afraid of like being accepted or whatever. And like, uh, this really helps us to like get our stress off of our back.
Imagine, just the scene, like continue to breathe in slowly and calmly.
Really helps like delete the stress out of your life. So if you're ever going through a bad time, I'll just try and meditate.
I really liked it. It's really good for people to know that they have a place where they belong and to live, and that there's other people like them.
It shows people that they have worth and that they have to accept people, which is sometimes also for.
At this time, I'd like to thank you for watching that video and turn it back over to Mr. Gennaro.
So in closing, I just wanted to add a remark. This summer, I watched a movie that was based on a true story about a letter that John Lennon wrote to an aspiring artist. In the letter, he essentially said, "Never compromise your art." What do you think about that? I've thought about that the entire summer, and I haven't stopped thinking about it. Anyone that I can tell the story to, I share it. And my reflection on that comment is that the profession that we're in, education, is an art. There's an art of teaching. There's an art to being an administrator. There's an art to parenting. The big piece of that is the human connection, understanding people, understanding their needs, and helping them be the best people they can be. So every day, every decision that we make, and I speak for myself and definitely our leadership and Board of Education, the question we ask is, is what we're doing benefiting our students? The answer to that, I always come to, based on our presentations today and the work that we've done here, is yes. So the challenge that I offer to all of you, and I challenge myself every day, is do not ever compromise that art. Thank you.
To conclude the public presentations that you all witnessed tonight, I just wanted to say again, thank you to Barbara McFadden, Gina Parisi, for sharing your journey with us, despite aspiring to see art and how that played out for your whole summer experience, and then bringing that back to us. So thank you. And to the Copeland presentation, the staff, the administration, the partnership, continue to appreciate your leadership, the vision you have set for us moving forward, and the work that you're doing in partnership with the community to ensure that we're doing everything we can to demystify and make a safe place to talk about mental health. So with that, I'll close the public presentations and back to our Board President.
Thank you very much. Moving now to public discussion. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operation of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for the comments. May I have a motion, please, to open to the public? So moved. Second. Mrs. Hellborg and Mrs. Smith. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to address the Board? Kindly come up and sign in, please.
So I wanted to address two things briefly. First, we've come to know recently, and I don't know if this will be missed, that there is soon to be a requirement, that there is now a requirement for all of the volunteers at the school, or some members of, or volunteering at the school, to have both criminal background checks and training. And unfortunately, we've been trying to define who exactly are those volunteers without success. We've gotten different feedback from members of the board we've spoken to, which is either here nor there. But I just wanted to call out that, you know, especially these days, we've got a lot of working parents that are very difficult to trust and find volunteers. So for the Board to be able to put together a process or some sort of a outline in place to define better who are those volunteers, are the volunteers, the room parents, I already know that it's the Board, the PTA, Board members, is if the parent comes in three times a year for twenty minutes during the book fair for their child's class. We really need to understand who that is, and then also understand exactly what the process is to get them the background check, to get, as I understand, the reimbursement from the Board, to be able to explain to them exactly how far or what that criminal background check entails, what requirements are, who sent that information. And then in addition to that, if there's training required, if there's any way to streamline the training, maybe have one big training per school, or several different things about the, for a certain period of time, that parents can attend, to make it easier for parents to meet those requirements, to make it easier for them to be a volunteer at school. So that's one. The second one is, is as you probably are aware, the Dwyer PTA and its members and the community has raised a good amount of money to put together a new playground for Dwyer. We work very hard, and unfortunately, we reached a crossroads now where it looks as if we're going to be successful in being able to afford that playground by the summer of 2020. However, where we're stuck is between two things, whether we can do a community build and be able to afford it by summer, or whether we have, there is an additional like thirteen thousand dollars to have installed for us. And so we really haven't been able to get a clear understanding of what's needed or what work can be built, because that's where we like to go, very cost-effective PTA. We would rather not have to struggle or scramble or, you know, overburden our membership or community to donate more money. So if we can have, you know, some sort of an answer or response sooner than later to let us know how we can not only, you know, lead the expectations of our membership, of our community, and the people who have so far sponsored this effort by us. So that's what we're asking. So community builds for thirteen thousand dollars, we just need to know, you know, what the, what are our options are? If they're an option, what we need to do for that, darling?
Thank you. Thank you. I will make a comment on behalf of the Board. Whenever you have questions like that, going first to the building principal, and then perhaps the district administration is the place to go. The fact that you've mentioned you've spoken to several Board members and gotten different answers, that's not the route to go, because you will get different answers often. We do not run the day-to-day operations of the school system, the administration does. So I encourage you to talk to our administrators and not individual Board members. That's not our role. Anyone else? If not, may I have a motion, please, to close to the public? So moved. Mrs. Shields? Second. Mrs. Jericho? Moving on to communications. Has there any other additional communications since these are listed? No, there has not. Thank you very much. Moving on to approve the minutes of August 28th. May I have a motion, please? So moved. Mrs. Jericho? Second. Mrs. Shields? Board discussion? Mrs. Smith? I just kind of heard that voice. Board discussion? If not, roll call, please. Mrs. Jericho? Yes. Mrs. Hellborg? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Yes. Mrs. Shields? Yes. Mrs. Smith? Yes. Mrs. Tom? Yes. Motion passes. Moving to Superior Attorney Court, Dr. Panamia.
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I'm pleased to report that we had a very smooth opening of our schools for the 2019-2020 school year. This is a credit to the hard work and dedication of our principals, teachers, support staff, and central office staff. They all demonstrate how we truly are better together. As you know, September is the month when our schools host their back-to-school night activities. I've attended these events, Stony Brook and Divieto, and both were filled with our families. It is truly inspiring to see so many families support these events by taking time out to connect with our schools and our teachers. It sets the tone for a very positive year marked by strong partnerships between our schools and the students and families we serve. With regard to the hiring of Class Three officers for our elementary schools, I'm pleased to report one is being sworn in tomorrow and should start by early next week. We have other candidates in the pipeline, and two candidates we know and expect to apply after the October first date when changes to the regulation are enacted. I have a quick insert announcement from our PE teacher at Dwyer that I'd like to also share. At Dwyer this year, they'll be hosting a Take Your Parents to PE Week. This is a fun way to learn about the physical education program at your child's school, sponsored by the Active Schools Movement. It's a campaign meant to highlight the importance of physical learning in our schools. Active Schools is a collective impact movement, helping schools provide students with equitable access to sixty minutes of physical activity and play every day. PE teachers welcome parents to participate in class and see the fun and engaging activities that are helping keep students healthy and active. The week-long campaign encourages students and families to be physically active together at home and in the community. And to your PE teacher in the audience, Ms. Blasi, thank you for your leadership on this event. Finally, I'm thrilled to remind the community, I will be hosting the first of three community forums on Thursday, October 3rd, at 7:00 PM here at the Copeland Cafeteria. The theme of the first forum will be Determining the State of Our Schools. A letter is going home tomorrow to families and community leaders to ensure we establish an inclusive strategic planning process where all feel welcome. Each forum will have a distinct theme, and everyone is welcome to attend all three forums. If you are only able to attend one forum, you are still welcome and encouraged to join us. The feedback gathered from each forum will help shape the creation of goal areas for the district, and then these goal areas will be a starting point for the creation of a strategic plan, identifying the strategies and resources we will use to achieve our stated goals. I expect to present our Board of Education with this strategic plan in February of 2020 to inform our planning process for the 2020-2021 school year and beyond. To ensure we're prepared to appropriately host our first forum, please let us know if you'll be joining us on October 3rd. You can RSVP by calling my office or sending me a direct email. We look forward to partnering with the community in this exciting opportunity to assist in shaping the future of Rockaway Township Public Schools. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Panamia? If not, Mrs. DeCarlo, this is the master of the board.
Thank you. I just have a short report for this evening to just update everybody on where the business office is at this point. We've been closed out for our fiscal year 1819, and we're now working exclusively in school year 1920. The onsite part of our yearly board is on pre. There are still some open items that we will be sending to the orderers as we complete them. We have a couple of items looking forward. We have our submission of the ASSA in November, which is the application for state school pay, and we will be getting preliminary preparations already for next year's project. On a different note, I would like to address the Dwyer Playground, because we have moved ahead in some of that. ahead in some of that, and I just wanted to let you know that I spoke to, I received an email from a woman named Desiree. I don't even remember her last name, unfortunately. And we spoke. And the first thing I did was call our risk manager, who's an insurance person, because I needed to find out with him what the safety is as far as having a community build versus a professional build. And he said to me, the first thing we need to find out is whether or not the manufacturer of the playground is going to hold the warranty in place if it's built by the community. So I did relay that back to Desiree yesterday, just recently that I got the, that I had a conversation with our risk manager. So what he's going to need is a letter from the company saying that they will not void the warranty if it's built by the community. And at the time I spoke to her, we were still deciding between two designs, so we would need the design that we finally settled on and the plans for that. So that's where we are right now. I know things may not be moving as quickly as we had, but we have to do our diligence and make sure that we are doing everything right, safe. So that's where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Mrs. DeCarlo? If not, Mr. Higgins?
Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. The school year has gotten off to a flying start, and the district is in the midst of several new initiatives in our academic programs. This morning, Copeland Middle School hosted a delegation of teachers from Kuzu City Public School System in Kuzu, China. As part of the New Jersey Educational Community Cooperative, Copeland Middle School was selected to host this group of 25 middle and elementary teachers from Kuzu. We were honored to host this delegation and to share our practices as a district and school. We will post pictures and a blurb on our website shortly. This group was interested in learning about how technology is infused in learning throughout schools in the United States. Copeland Middle School provides an excellent example of how technology is seamlessly integrated into daily student learning practices, and they were eager to see how our teachers and students model this. The group toured the school and the grounds outside, thanks to Mr. Ganella, and met with several individual teachers in their classrooms and viewed a short presentation about how Copeland has worked to provide this level of technology integration. The group was with us for about two hours. Thanks to Principal Ganella, Vanessa Waxman, Marie Barcata Payne, Ken Fuchs, Marie Anna Revelli, Brian Adams, Suzanne Barcaoui, Erin Boots King, Leanne Hurley, Susan Harris, Teresa Chapman, and Tara Smith, who graciously shared their classrooms and practices. Next week, we are convening our grade group facilitators to commence work on the final pieces of our shift to standards-based report cards in grades K through 5. Much of the work toward this move was done last year in coordination with the teachers' principals and Dr. Tanamiya. This final piece will establish benchmarks in each subject area to clarify the expectations for meeting each group of standards on the report cards. I will be publicizing a series of information sessions throughout the month of October to help educate the community about what this change means. Please keep an eye out for the announcements in your school newsletters, our website, and our social media outlets. As I mentioned earlier, this year has started with many new initiatives that were conceived last year. Among them are the following: Balanced Literacy in K-5 with Reading Workshop Foundations in K-2, Words Their Way in 3 through 5, Universal Screening Assessments in Math and ELA in grades K through 8, 5th grade math pilots, Ready Mathematics at DVO, Dwyer, and Berchwood, Eureka Math Pilots at Stony Brook and KDM. We're also piloting Elevate Science in Grade 3 at DVO. And at the middle school, we are using a system called Panorama to help our teachers with social emotional learning in the classroom with students. All are up and running, and teachers are working diligently to learn alongside the students. It is a credit to our staff to see the amount of dedication and grace they show in implementing these new programs. This is no small feat, and they are to be commended for their efforts. The coincide with these new initiatives withheld training in the following, led by experts in their respective methods and programs: Fundations, Words Their Way, Reading Workshop, and Ready Math. On our website today is the district's revised K-5 homework guidance that details our recommendations and expectations for our families. This document was created from feedback received from both community and faculty throughout last year. A letter will be emailed home shortly, which contains a copy of the guidance. As always, we welcome your questions or concerns. Please reach out to my office should you wish to discuss this policy further. The document can be found under the main page, Department's Curriculum Instruction. Lastly, the district has taken a closer look at the Response Intervention System of Support for our Students. The RTI teams from each building met earlier this month to reframe our processes in order to make use of the data we will collect from the Universal Screening Assessments. These processes aim to make sure that we are locating gaps in student learning and finding interventions to help alleviate those gaps much earlier in the educational careers of these children. A clear document outlining the changes of the RTI program will be available to the public within the next few months after receiving more input from the RTI teams.
Thank you. Questions from Mr. Higgins? You're not sitting back and doing nothing, that's for sure. So, thank you very much. With that, we move to committee reports. Mrs. Hellbord?
The Education Committee met this past Monday, and we talked about several of the things that we spoke about. We talked about the visit to Copeland. It sounded like a very exciting experience for the students and for the administration and teachers. We got a more in-depth, we got to a more in-depth discussion of the standards-based report cards and how each standard case broke down. I requested that examples for parents to help them understand what this is supposed to look like, and I think this is headed in a great direction. We got, we talked about the curriculum updates, as well as we talked about the progress of the trainings from the beginning of the school year with foundations and reading workshop and how it went at the beginning of the school year, as well as we got a preview of the RTI document in its draft form, basically breaking down how, very detailed how, breaking down how the process is going to work, okay, and so. And I believe the last thing we talked about was the, there's an update on the website regarding the homework guidelines that should be sent home to parents, and it's also posted on the website for review. One of the things as a parent I took away from it is that you define the role of homework. And we have a common language of why it's given, that it's really important. And also, within the document, there's ways for parents to help support our homeworks, our teachers, and the system, and the programs, and our curriculum.
In addition, I think we also talked about ideas for how to keep the community informed. So when standard-based report cards come out, that there is a workshop for parents to help them understand what that's all about, instead of just doing it on a 10-minute or 15-minute blurb, rather have a whole night dedicated to that, as well as other initiatives going forward. So I think that's important to have. So look for those dates coming soon. Questions for the Education Committee? Any other committees?
Operations Committee is meeting tomorrow around 4:00.
Thank you. Policy, I guess we'll get a policy, or do you want one?
I have another one that I probably might as well just write ahead. I just wanted to, at our last policy meeting, we discussed dates for the rest of the fall. So I just wanted to report out on that. It'll be October 8th, November 12th, and December 10th. In addition to that, now I do have an update about the audit. Should I do it now or do I want to wait until?
Do it now, you're right ahead.
All right, I just want to read a letter that we received. It's from Strauss Esme. "Our office reviewed Rockaway Township's Bylaw, Policy, and Regulation Manual via the manuals on the district's website. We compared the bylaws, policies, and regulations in the current district manual to Strauss Esme's Bylaw, Policy, and Regulation Guide Manual that includes all new and updated bylaw, policy, and regulation guides. The enclosed documents provide you with a cross-reference spreadsheet indicating if Rockaway Township's existing bylaws, policies, and or regulations require an update or are in good condition. If the district's current bylaw, policy, or regulation needs to be updated, we noted so under the "update needed" column. If the current document was good and in compliance, we noted so under the "good" column. You will also find some general self-explanatory notes under the "update needed" column. Based on our view, the district's manual is in good condition but is in need of updating. There are some policies or regulations that the district does not have in place and require adoption. There are also some documents which require updating by the board in order to meet compliance with current statutes, administrative code, and or law. But based on the current condition of your manuals, the district person completing the policy work is capable of updating the bylaws, policies, and regulations, we have identified as needing updates. Our office recommends updating the bylaws, policies, and regulations on the attached spreadsheet in order to meet compliance with statutes, codes, and monitoring requirements. In addition, we can make some suggestions on how your district can plodically update the manuals using our in-line, online, and district personnel. Strauss Esme Associates is also available to provide the service of updating the district's manuals. I'm attaching a proposal for our fees for this process in case the district will prefer our office to revisions. Our office hopes the information provided will assist you in the Board of Education. If Strauss Esme Associates can be of service in this updating process, please do not hesitate to contact us, rather than yours, Strauss Esme Associates." Now, the attached proposal. It's dated August 2019. This proposal provides a plan for updating your existing policy manual and updating the manual of administrative regulations. Preparation of updated bylaws and policies, $2,000. Preparation of updated administrative regulations, $2,000. Total to update bylaws, policy, and regulations, $4,000. There's an additional fee of $1,000 to upload the adopted updated policies and regulations to the district's district online policy manuals. The fee to update the manuals is in addition to the current pass maintenance fee of $2,545 with subscription here for passage July 1st, June 30th. Should you choose to accept this proposal or any portion thereof, Strauss Esme can be in part, but in 30 days of the date that is a mutually satisfactory agreement has been adopted, then answering materials have been delivered to our office. This proposal is submitted for review within 60 days of date of our consent, after which time we reserve the right of revision or withdrawal without prior written notice. Please call our office if you would like to meet to discuss this proposal with the detail or have any questions regarding the services provided. I have my own thoughts on that, but I'd like to hear what everyone else's.
Well, I think that I would appreciate time to look at that proposal. I'd like to see the spreadsheet. So I think a discussion right now is premature. If we hit us with this, we just can't discuss it. So if there's a way to get the information to us, everybody on the board should see the spreadsheet, should see the letter, and should see the proposal. If you have, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, it would be very easy if you were sort of to contest and, that would be very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Along that line, I was going to bring it up under openness, I believe that you had stated at a board meeting that the last policy alert from January 2019 had been completely by policy, and we're waiting on the next one to chaser on. So I did go back and check online, and I was very disappointed. There was regs on this policy alert that have not been updated, and, you know, you gave us assurance that it was done, and it wasn't. I specifically go through each one. The reg for 7440, school district security, if the policy was done July 2019, the reg is from January 2013, was specifically on this policy alert and not completed. Then there was also on policy 5611, the reg was not completed, it's made of 2015, whereas the policy was updated July 2019. And then we also have 5612, the Solon District Board of Education members' employees, once again, the policy updated July 19, the reg is from June 2015, and the same applies for removal of students with assault records offenses, 5613. And then policy 8461, reporting violence, vandalism, and possession of illegal alcohol and other drug offenses, that reg is from January 2013. So they were all listed on this policy alert, and we were sure this had all been accomplished and had been. So that causes me a little bit of concern that I feel as if I'm not really checking these items are slipping through the cracks.
Those are some of the anomalies that we recognized as well. When I did report out that we were updated, that was the conversation I had out of previous administration and how...
But the policy committee can go online and look just as easily as I can, and having stated that yes, this had all been completed, that's where my concern possibly lies.
Yes, I share that. So at the next policy meeting, perhaps then you can go through that list and perhaps update us with what needs to be done, at the administration as well.
Yes, and the other department, what I was going to report on is our board committee report is, as the board has received, we did just receive a policy alert for August 2019. So I will discuss this later, but that would be our focus, is making sure that we are completing the current alert, as well as what Mrs. DeCarlo just mentioned.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? I have one. From the Rockaway Township Board of Education Negotiations Team regarding the negotiations with the Rockaway Township Bus Drivers Association. On March 29th, 2019, representatives of the Rockaway Township Board of Education and the Rockaway Township Bus Drivers Association began negotiating a successor agreement to the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the board and the association, known as the CBA. The parties are currently working under the terms of the current CBA, which expired on July 1st, 2019. The parties met on two occasions to discuss various proposals, and agreement has been reached on multiple items. During this process, the board has listened to the concerns of the association. Chief among these concerns is an increase to salaries, in particular, an increase which raises the starting salaries to ensure that the district continues to attract and retain bus drivers. During the second meeting, the board offered a salary increase commensurate with increases negotiated for employees represented by the Rockaway Township Education Association, the RTE. These increases would ensure an equitable raise to all bus drivers. Despite this, the association informed the board that it would seek the assistance of a state-appointed mediator. The first mediation session was scheduled for September 3rd, 2019. However, due to unforeseen circumstances, the mediator was unable to attend the session at the last minute. The board and the association met without the mediator and returned to negotiations in an attempt to resolve the impasse. The board again proposed a salary increase commensurate with the increases reached in negotiations with the RTE. Accompanying this proposal was a board-prepared salary guide, which will be made publicly available on the district website. The salary guide illustrated how the board proposes to respond to the association's concerns regarding an equitable increase in higher starting salaries. In particular, the board's proposal would increase the bus driver's starting hourly rate by more than $5 over a three-year period. While the parties did not reach an agreement on September 3rd, the board is optimistic that an agreement will ultimately be reached when the parties reschedule their meeting with the mediator. The board is committed to its proposal to increase bus driver salaries at a rate commensurate with the increases given to other employees. This proposal is fair, equitable, and achieves the goals of both the board and association. The board appreciates and values its bus drivers and has made significant effort to address their concerns. Still, the board is aware of the economic impact of the school budget and the cost of a successor CBA upon the district. The board will not disregard its obligation to ensure fiscal responsibility and stability. The board remains committed to educational excellence and will continue to work with the association and a state-appointed mediator to reach a reasonable, equitable agreement. We are in the process of securing a date with the mediator. We are waiting to hear now, the first date that was offered was on Columbus Day. Unfortunately, there's, I believe, the bus drivers were unavailable on that day, therefore we're looking for another day with the mediator where all can sit down and try to resolve this as quickly as possible. So thank you very much for that.
I would just like to add, for our board attorney to pass this along to our person who's a mediator for us, that I just feel a little bit of frustration in the evenings. The evening that we met as a board committee, we came up with 11 dates, and one of those was not the date that then came in the mail of finding data. was not the date that then came in the mail of finding data for Columbus Day. So I just feel that coming behind in the meeting in a timely fashion, which gives me a little bit of frustration on my part as far as what's happening with the door firm and our media. So I'd just like that to just...
With that, we're moving to then recommended for board action. First section is personnel. It begins on page four, it ends on page seven. There will be no public discussion as required by law. All discussion took place during executive session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields, Mrs. Hellborn. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no current HIV determinations, therefore we move on to education, beginning on page seven, ending on page seven. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico. Board discussion. If not, I can open to the public. Anyone has a comment about education? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to D, special education, beginning on page eight, ending on page eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Chirico?
Second.
Mrs. Shields. Board discussion. If not, I can open to the public. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to E, administration, beginning on page nine, ending on page nine. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Chirico?
Second.
Mrs. Shields. Board discussion.
I'm just selfishly very excited about the trust program at KDM. I saw them sign it for me.
That's okay. No problem.
No, I know they're very excited there, too.
That's great. That's great. For the purpose of the public, could I ask the administration to explain the inter-district public school choice program?
There are certain districts in the state of New Jersey that have decided that they will accept students from other districts. So a parent can decide, a parent of a child who normally go to this school district can decide to send their child to what's called a choice district. So these four students identified by numbers only, and their parents have decided to send them to a school outside of Rockaway Township, so that's where the school chooses.
So we pay the tuition, though, to that school?
No, we don't pay tuition, but they can receive or stay there.
They can stay there, okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Now I can open to the public. Roll call.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to finance, beginning on page 10, ending on page 11. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Shields?
Second.
Mrs. Chirico. Board discussion.
I wanted to let the board know that I signed off on the purchase orders yesterday morning and I'll be happy to support, and I did have a couple of questions and a couple of items that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. There was a question about, we had a repair on the DVO roof that I had asked Mrs. Carlo to look into, knowing that that was a recent, uh, recent, uh, new roof, so she was hopeful to see if there's any warranty or anything like that, or it was minimal, but I was just curious about that.
Okay.
I spoke to Franklin, and it was a warranty on the roof, but it was particularly there, it was not covered. And then the other information was, was that we have a mold policy in place, and that was something that Mrs. Carlo explained to me, it costs us $10,300 for the year. It was something that used to be covered under our insurance, but they no longer cover that, and there's insurance, you can get extra insurance for that. So she made a decision, which was, you know, smart, knowing how other districts had had mold issues, black mold, so that's something that going for the year, we could be seeing in our policy, or we feel it's proof of such a risk caused by mold. And that, we had a couple of items that were done prior.
I have a question that, well, you're allowed, Mrs. Carlo. For the water treatment system at KDM, can you explain what happened there?
Yes, I can. Just, I'm going to use the PFNA instead of say completely, because unless I spell it out phonetically, and I don't have an phonetic, some type of chemical, or something. Anyway, PFNA is a byproduct of plastic manufacturing, and they're finding it in groundwater throughout the state and I guess in many other places. New Jersey is one of the few states, or one of the only states, that has required that groundwater for public buildings be tested with PFNA. So they did an original test at KDM. Now, KDM already has what's called a reverse osmosis filtration system from problems prior to PFNA. And when they test the water, it comes through the filtration system and goes to the water fountains and the sinks that we wash our vegetables in, or whatever. The water tests were all within the, well, under the limit of 13 parts per building. The state has decided that we can't use only that filtration system, because they want the water treated at the point of entry into the building and not at the point of use. So in essence, that's going to make all the water that comes into the dis, into the building, including water, the sanitary water, everything is going to be filtered for PFNA. So it's going to be a three-step process. This is the first step, which will actually filter the water as it comes in. So if the state comes in, they're not going to say we're out of compliance, because this will put us in compliance by treating the water as it enters the building. We're going to have an outside tank installed at KDM, because now what we'll have to do is train and store a day's worth of water, which will be 3,000 gallons. The size of the tank is too big to bring into the school, and we would have to take out doorways, so we have decided to put an outdoor weatherproof tank, which will be probably part two of this project. And then hooking it all up and hooking it into the existing ONRO system will finish the project up. So it's going to start shortly, it will probably continue throughout this year, but rest assured, the water that's coming to that building now, and especially once it's going to be twice, it's perfectly safe to drink. Now, all of the water, including that toilets and that, you know, in talking with, everything is going to be filtered from where it enters into the building and where it's coming to be totally inside.
Thank you. So because it was an unexpected expense, that's the transfer that came upon us by surprise, let me, thank you. And then the board discussion?
Yes, you mentioned the part two of that. Is that included in the cost, or is there going to be additional charges?
This, what we're well said and done, we're lucky if we spend less than $1,000. There is a spill farm in the state of New Jersey that is supposed to be addressed, these costs. My understanding right now is that the spill farm has no funds in it, so that districts and municipalities that have been bringing for reimbursement are not getting it. The state is claiming that they're going to go back to the companies that actually produce these plastics, that pour the pollution ground water, and they're going to run from them, through the spill farm, and maybe at some point on the order of, but right now, I'm asking that question.
Thank you.
You have another question on number six, the Florence solution, is that something that was developed in the summer?
Yes. Any other questions? If not, I can open to the public. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to policy, beginning on page 11, ending on page 12. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mrs. Chirico?
Second.
Mrs. Shields.
Mrs. Mezick.
Okay, on tonight's agenda, there's a motion to approve the following policies for a first read. Policy 4125, employment of support staff members. Policy 5519, dating violence at school. Policy 5610, suspension. There's also a motion to approve the following policies for a second read. Policy 24.7, pupil intervention referral services. Policy 2460, special education. Policy 5620, expulsion. Policy 8330, student records. Policy 4125, we had to make a small addition, that this was in accordance with policy number 9180, because they are subject to the criminal history record information requirement. That was the only question. Can I ask you one more?
Yes, I do. This had come before the board reported, you take the vote of the rest.
Correct.
But at that time, on page four or five, I had a question about a half special hire before January 18, 2002.
Correct.
And that is still in our system, that was discussed, because I know legal at the time, obviously, we may not know, but that was something that we do, and I see it's still.
Correct. Would you like to?
We discussed, yeah, we discussed it, but it felt like it's still something we want to keep in here. We also sought counsel from our visitor, from the Strauss Esme, who didn't advise us that it would be wise to take this out, so we filed their counsel to keep it in.
Any other questions about policy 4125? Okay, so second policy of a first read is policy 5519, dating violence at school. Uh, we changed this, just a small update, on page two of three. It's now, instead of intervention referral services, INS, it is response to intervention RTI. Any questions about that?
I have a question on this one. On page two of three, it refers to the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards for Comprehensive and Physical Education. I believe the name of the core content standard has been changed, and it should be New Jersey Student Learning Standards. I don't think the core curriculum exists anymore. Correct.
Okay, I'm going to make that correction. The third policy of a first read is policy 5610, our suspension. Page one, we just made some minor changes to, it's more readable, we split the, let's see here, page shift, split the paragraph, we split the first paragraph into two, and then paragraph five, we removed adult students and now they're in cardinals. Any questions about that?
So then when these, we vote yes tonight, then when these cue for the second read, these changes, the, the core content standards, is that what I voted change? Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions on the first read? So on for a second read. Again, policy 2417, pupil intervention referral services. Any other questions on that in the last meeting? Policy 2460, special education. Any other questions? Policy 5620, expulsion. Any questions? Policy 8330, student records. I do need to ask your guidance on this one, Mrs. Salmy. On our previous agendas, we had a policy for 0155, board committees. According to our, um, our audit, which I will be sending out, those are the policies that they set as fine, so at this point, I would like to make a motion to, it's bring back from being tabled, and make a motion to withdraw.
Make a motion to?
Withdraw the table.
Oh, withdraw the table. So I would...
We just had to bring it back from, from being tabled, and then at that point, I want to make it a motion to withdraw the policy as, because we had tabled it as a first read, so to bring it back and withdraw it.
So, legal?
Right now, you have a pending motion on these policies.
Okay.
It's appropriate, you're correct, Roberts requires you to bring it back only then to vote to withdraw.
Correct.
So I think right now, you should probably, I mean, finish this one, and under policy, add the idea of, and I don't know the actual resolution number or whatever, but certainly we can craft a resolution that you can vote on to then withdraw, I guess, change the 0155.
Uh, no, but we're just going to, because we, there were changes that we were contemplating, we just want to completely withdraw it and not do anything.
And if you table it, then that is the correct motion, so.
At this point, we're going to have a vote on the first and second read, and then we're having a...
That's what I was...
Correct. So the motion was to, to, to approve the first read and the second read of the policies that are listed on the agenda.
Correct.
So before we vote, I can open to the public on anything listed here. If not, let's have a roll call on that first.
Mrs. Chirico?
Yes.
Mrs. Hellborn?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezick?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Salmy?
Yes, motion passes. Now, it would be a motion to withdraw the tabling of 0155, is that? So you could bring it back next meeting?
Uh, no, I believe if Roberts rules, if I remember them correctly, I have to bring it back from the table, and then I have to make a motion to withdraw. Is that two separate motions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a great vote, probably, 2,000 years ago, but in the end, yes, you would have to make a motion or restore the original, what was tabled. So I would call it restoring the motion, or restoring that resolution. I don't know what resolution was, so I was not in the last meeting, but I would say a motion to restore a resolution, whatever, with respect to policy 0155. That would be the first one, you could vote on that. And then you can make a motion to withdraw it, and then it's actually out of existence. So I would say you had to take a motion to withdraw, uh, check that, a motion to restore the resolution concerning policy 0155, that probably would be number one. And then after that, it would be a motion to send, draw.
So we, do we need a full book, word of proposal?
I would do both, yes.
Okay.
I would do it, yes, by the governing body.
I'm really pleased, so.
So I'm going to.
But, but so we are, so I, I get the first part, we want to restore the motion to withdraw, right? To restore the motion, right?
We just want to restore the motion.
Restore the motion, okay. That's wonderful. And that allows us then to bring it back onto the table, correct?
And now we're, I guess you're in the business, I'm not in the business.
We haven't gotten to new business, yeah, but you're the lawyer. So we haven't gotten to new business yet. But my question would be that before, I, I would like to see the policy one more time before we do anything with it.
You can always bring it back in another meeting, if you like, do this at another meeting.
Can we vote to bring it back, and then at the next meeting?
We can, I mean, it was just going to be restored, as if we had not done meetings.
I don't even remember what it said.
It was just the original policy, because we wouldn't be doing any changes.
But we had several versions, so I want to make sure we're all agreeing on the same version, that's all. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, because we kept changing it a little bit, so.
You can, you can have a motion to restore the... You can, you can have a motion to restore the resolution at another meeting. So you can do it at your next meeting if you'd like.
That sounds wonderful. So.
That's fine.
So we're doing it at the next meeting, is what you're saying.
I'm not saying that. You're saying, you said you want it, you don't have to vote anything until you see the policy.
I can which is, I can make a motion to. I can make a motion to bring back the table because it was a indefinite table and I can bring it back in to the table until the next meeting.
Remember what's happening is what you're, just, just to drill down to it. You bring out a motion that was tabled, only then to withdraw it. So what the effect of all of this would be, whatever your policy currently says with respect to 0155 is your policy.
Yes.
The effect of what she's, if I'm.
Correct, you have, I think, exactly.
All she's doing is making sure under Roberts, which is again, this, I don't think it's 2,000-year-old book, but it's a 1,200-year-old book. Under that book, if you table a resolution, you restore it, then vote on it. Okay? So I think what you're suggesting with the followables, which is you restore the thing, you vote to withdraw it now. You may not be in favor, I mean, you can do this later, but the effect of those two resolutions would be whatever is 0155. Whatever 0155 is, is your policy. If you want to do all this at another meeting, you can. End 0155 for me, it's your policy. But it's entirely, it's.
What is the will of the board?
Well, since we were going to work on it again, I, I figured how this would be the best way to handle it. We discussed this in policy very briefly, was to just have our policy as it stands right now. And the only way to make sure that we are following Roberts rules is to do what I just suggested, which is to bring it back from the table and then withdraw it completely. Because obviously you have other work in front of the policy committee with the policy alert, so we're just not going to. I'll throw in something.[1746.11]